Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, June 16th to order at 7:01. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the least we call roll, please. Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Benish.
Here.
Councilmember Chevlin.
Councilmember McGraw.
Here.
Mayor Hubbard.
Here. Okay, I would entertain an adoption of the agenda unless there are any additions or corrections to the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by councilmember Hatfield and a second by councilmember Benish. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Adoption of the agenda is accomplished. Okay, next we have visitor presentations. So we have one that's on the agenda and I think we have some visitors also in the crowd. So first we're going to start with 5A, which is Grow Through Opportunity Swearing In Ceremony. Will the chief like to come up and say a few words?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. With the exception of councilmember Benish, I've been in front of you before and believe it or not, this is the fourth year of the Grow Through Opportunity program in the city of Chaska. If you recall, this is a fantastic program that takes young people and they can work alongside city staff, including the police department, which has just been a fantastic program. Again, if you recall, this is about an eight-week program where they come to work for the city two days a week, and we were actually the third community in the state to adopt this, and there since have been others as well. But what makes Chaska's program unique, in my opinion, or the strength of our program, is that we involve all of the various city departments consisting of administration, finance, police, fire, electric, public works, the town course, water and sewer, and the community center. And at least compared to the pioneers in this program, that's a lot more opportunity for these young people as they become our cadets. So if you look around the room, we do have some of our past cadets in the room as well, and I think it's very important to note that some of them have gone on to seek employment with the city beyond their time as our cadets in the program. But for you two to remember is in August, we're going to do a recap session, and I'm going to ask you guys what your favorite part of the internship program was. It doesn't have to be the police.
It could be admini-
I won't take it personally.
It could be administration.
It can be fire. It can be administration. So I'm going to ask you guys that on the last night. So as you go through these next eight weeks, just really pay attention to what you think was the most fun and where you had the best opportunities, and we'll have you share that with us on that last night.
Okay.
All right? But what's important, and before we get into this, is every officer that starts in the police department has to take an oath. In a few minutes, we're going to do that. The mayor is going to administer the oath of office for both of you as police cadets. But before we do that, just a few quick things on both of our cadets for this year. Griffin Williams lives in Eden Prairie. He enjoys working out, music, and cooking. You might have to give me some tips, and hanging out with family and friends. He describes himself as helpful and caring in that he enjoys volunteering and working with young people, and he's very excited for this internship opportunity. And then we also have Aiden Coughlin, who lives in Shorewood, and he loves meeting new people and socializing, which is going to be a really good thing for this position. And he enjoys playing pickleball, tennis, and basketball. He enjoys music and dancing. And he says that he has a sense of humor that is infectious, and he's a hard worker, which are also good traits for this position. And he also is excited to become a team member for the city of Chaska. So with that said, Mayor, if you want to come down and we will administer the oath of office.
All right. This is a first for me, so you guys will all have to bear with me. Let's see. Aiden, would you like to reverse?
Yeah.
Okay, so I want you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Aiden Coughlin, do solemnly swear-
So Ms.- -to the Constitution-
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge-
Faithfully charge-
The duties of-
The duties of-
An honorary police cadet.
An honorary police cadet.
Of the city of Chaska.
Of the city of Chaska.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To my ju- yeah.
Yeah, you got it, sorry. Put him along. Sorry. All right, well guess what? You're sworn in, sir.
Although they-
Well, may- should we, should we take a picture real quick?
People can feel free to come up and get a better angle too, if somebody wants. If anybody wants to get a better angle for photos.
Here, let's have you guys.
Over here.
Come this way.
Cut a noise makes us go where we need to be.
No, you go ahead, thanks. All right.
Awesome. All right, sir, congratulations.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing more of you. Okay, all right, Griffin, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Griffin Williams-
I, Griffin Williams.
Do solemnly swear-
To say it.
That I will support the Constitution-
That I support the Constitution.
Of the United States-
And the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge-
Faithfully, uh, 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 whom?
The duties of an honorary police cadet.
Of a police cadet.
Of the city of Chaska.
City of Chaska.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Best of my, uh, that's what I mean.
So help me God.
Oh, God.
All right, guess what?
Take a picture? Ready, smile. All right.
All right, congratulations.
Yeah.
I was going to say, we should get one with all the cadets.
Okay, yeah, should we have the cadets?
I'm so proud of you.
Aww.
No, Ellie, you're the sweetest.
Was that from our team? We need to have the badges on either side here. Hey, everyone, smile.
So cute, guys.
You go ahead. Don't be shy.
All right, guys.
All right, and maybe just the cadets for this year?
Oh. It's like mine.
I'm, I'm so thankful for you. I, I don't miss this, this place.
Aww.
It was, it was so proud.
Thanks, Ellie.
All right, one more. One, two, three. And then whoever stayed there, we got some others, don't be shy, come on.
Any family are feeling good?
All right.
Good, all right.
Thanks, guys.
You guys can go ahead and have a seat. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
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 Okay, so there, there is cake in the break room for those that are here.
Congratulations, we'll see you tomorrow.
All right. Chief, they both told me before the meeting they were most excited for the police, so you have a tall bar to achieve there.
Interesting department.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. It was wonderful seeing everybody here this evening.
The DM41 had me so turned around.
I finally got to take a different way this go-around.
I think I went down past your house.
New way.
Mayor.
Yes.
Can I just ask, since we have a larger group of people, can I just have you run through in case we did have to shelter?
Yep.
Because we have a lot of unfamiliar people, including myself. I don't know where to go. Could you just talk to us about if that were to occur, what we should do?
Yeah, so if we do have to go out because of a storm, we'll go straight out to the stairs down there. I'll lead the way so people can see where to go, and then we'll go down into the hallway. There's a stairway into the basement, but stay out of the elevator. I have been stuck in there before, so, and it's not fun, but there is a stairwell that goes down to the basement, and then we have a hallway down there. So just, just follow me.
Well, now that we know that that's good to know.
Now we did know, it won't happen, see?
Well, that's good. I think that's good, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, moving along, do we have any other visitors here that are here to present that maybe aren't an agenda item this evening? So, okay, we have, come on up, you'll have to state your name and address for the record, and we can't take any action at this time, but we are listening here, so.
Well, welcome. My name is Scott Morse. I'm at 542 Sweetwater Path in Chaska, the Brooks Ridge Division property. It's also known as the Pioneer Hollow. I just found that out with some documents. And we're here today to urge some action to take place to get a quiet zone over Bavaria Avenue, Bavaria Road. When my wife and I first purchased the house about eight years ago, they said that train would run about twice a week. Well, much to our surprise, it's doing about six times a day now. And at 3:00 in the morning, we get a very nice wake-up call with a horn blaring. So I know that it's a county road, there's a few other things. We met with Matt and his staff, and it's a little more complicated than when, when I first investigated the, what you needed to do to have a quiet zone, which is almost all there, except there's a little thing called a pedestrian crosswalk that also has to have gates and bells and whistles and all that. So anyways, it's getting to be quite noticeable for people's complaints. I'm on the HOA board, and we have people with babies that get woke up at 3:00 in the morning. It's not just financial, because it is 7% less value your home is if you're near a railroad, but it's also getting to be a health issue. And I'm 52 yards from my back door to the south rail of the railroad tracks. And I, I was looking through some documents that was provided to me, and what really came clear, it was that the city or the city planning, they only mentioned train noise once about the northwest corner of the property that goes along Bavaria. And the city was pleased with the Pulte homes for putting spruce pine trees there for mitigating the noise factor. I want to tell you, pine trees don't stand a chance against a horn that's on a railroad. And so I know there's some planning going on with the county road being widened, and that's, you know, eight, nine, 10 years from now. I don't have 10 years. I want to sleep. And I'm getting up at 3:00 AM now just because I'm used to it. So Matt and his staff has asked the railroad to, what happened? Because it was pretty good for a while. And I, something happened because it's been pretty good lately.
Yeah, actually, I got to answer back, so I'll say at the end.
So anyways, if there's any way we can, I, I, I just can't believe the city wouldn't have asked about the train noise even when they built Tuscany Community and Jonathan and all. I mean, there's plenty of opportunities that that could have been a quiet zone, especially with the growth that the city's experiencing. And for future, for the council to take an advisement is new developments that are next to a railroad should automatically have some kind of mitigation of this noise, because it's, it's just not right. I mean, you can put up with the clickety-clack of the railroad and especially in the wintertime when the house shakes, but being 52 yards is like a lob wedge in the golf course. It, that's pretty close. And more than importantly is, you start thinking about Palatine, Ohio, I think it was, that had a derailment, and you know, you never know what's going on in some of those cars, you know, and they just, they haul ethanol. And so I just want to, for future community development, this should be automatic. We should have quiet zones when you're that close to people's homes. With that, that's all I got. So thank you.
Matt, did you want to?
Yeah, I could, so a couple of things on that. So we did, I would say probably, what, three, four years ago, got together with the railroad with Twin Cities Western to talk with them about sort of their operations. And the thing that we focused on the most at that point was, they have a siding that they put on the railroad track, or next to the railroad track that starts just to the east of, of the Pioneer Bavaria sort of crossing there, and it goes all the way back into our industrial park. And so they put that on there because they have large storage needs during the, the course of the year with what they're actually hauling. And at the time, what was happening is that the cars were, when they decouple and couple, and, you know, you can imagine the bang and all that kind of stuff that goes with it. So as part of that process, we got them to agree to move that activity down into our industrial park and to do everything down, down on that end, which they did do. And they also gave like a number to call unless there, in case there was different issues that popped up, which I know Mike Gierman, who's on their Board of Directors, I know had a contact, and if there was issues that pop up, he was able to call them and they deal with them. They do have a new president of Twin Cities Western. I got introduced to him today, and he indicated that some of the noise that you guys were hearing a couple of weeks ago had to do with, they weren't able to use their line farther down because there was work with the Southwest Light Rail project that was going on that forced them to move some of the stuff over there. He said that's done, and they should be done with that type of activity until the fall time. And he said at that point, they will be moving it down into the industrial park, so that should take care of that. The other thing that was mentioned is that the train horn, whoever's blowing the train horn seems to be pretty aggressive with the, the way that they've been blowing it. So the president did say that they were going to be going through and reviewing those standards and making sure that they're not being excessive at, at blowing those. So Twin Cities Western has always been very responsive to us, which is good. So that's, that's sort of the one piece of the issue. The other one with a silent crossing, so we, you know, we have housing that exists along railroad tracks pretty much throughout the, the whole community. The only silent crossing that we have is actually in the Clover Ridge neighborhood. That was one that the developer actually wanted to put in when they built the Clover Ridge neighborhood, and they were the ones that actually paid for it. And they paid for it, hence the people who lived in Clover Ridge ended up paying for it through the, the cost of their lots and through their, their homes. So that, that's sort of the precedent that we've created in the past is that we can put in silent crossings, but the benefit is to the people who are adjacent to it. So right now, we're going through the, they had asked that we update sort of our cost estimate, because we did do a design for that a few years ago. I believe it was about $700,000 to $750,000.
Yeah, I remember being about a million, but yeah.
And so we're going through the process of, of basically, say, what the costs would be to do that, and then what would be sort of the breakdown per homeowner if we were to move in that, in that direction, and they petitioned us to do that.
Are, are they, is it that just Brook, Brook, Brooks Ridge, or are we talking about also Tuscany Hills?
So, see, this is where I think things get very complicated, because, you know, obviously, Tuscany Hills has been there-
Been a factor.
-for a very, very long time.
Yeah.
And we have not received a request from them in the past.
What about the Fairway Villas?
Uh, they're, they're a little bit further away. These ones are like right at the track.
The villas are?
Yeah.
The houses are, but I didn't think, I thought the villas were right there.
The villas are the beginning, but they're still farther than these two neighborhoods we're talking.
Yeah. These ones back right up to there. We're running the numbers two ways. We're running them as if you were, because they're, well, we're running them as if both neighborhoods were part of a project, and then we're running it as if one neighborhood, just to sort of see how the numbers shake out. There is a point on the railroad track that we have to sort of put notice that something is a silent crossing for the engineers and the trains. And so that ends up being sort of the demarcation line for benefit in that. And so that's what we're sort of looking at now. So we don't have the information yet, but we are pulling it together.
Are there grant opportunities to help alleviate some of that financial burden since it's after the fact and it's like noise pollution?
Maybe. I, I can't think of any off the top of my head.
Okay.
But, I mean, one thing for certain, a silent crossing is physically possible there.
Sure.
The, the real issue ends up being the cost, and then probably even more so is, how do we make sure that we're not, we're not inequitable with how we've treated these in the past, where again, Clover Ridge neighborhood ended up paying for their silent crossing to making sure that, that people who benefit are the ones that end up contributing towards it.
Sure.
So we'll have additional information, but yeah, Matt's pulling that together. But in the meantime, I'll, I'll get you copied up. I copied Mike Gierman, but, but I'll, I'll get the response back from the Twin Cities Western so that we can get you guys in the loop of sort of what they're doing, what they expect to do, and what they're going to do for training for, for some of their engineers.
I, I would like to just acknowledge, I appreciate you coming down here tonight and taking the time out to, to, to talk about this topic. I know it can be a little intimidating to get up in a public meeting and, and talk about things, so I really do appreciate it. And we'll make sure to stay on it and see if there's something that we can do. But I'm thankful that we have such a great relationship with the railroad that they, that sounds like maybe they're going to address some of the initial concerns.
Yeah, I mean, I, I reached out to him and he got back to me within two hours.
Yeah.
So I mean, there, and if I did that with Union Pacific, that would not happen.
Yeah, I know.
So.
I know.
So I, so I, I am very grateful that it's Twin Cities Western we're working with.
So, thank you. Okay, moving along, any other visitors for visitor presentation? Again, come on up, state your name and address and...
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Hubbard and councilmembers. My name is Jen Welvert. I live at 632 Drosin Circle. Sorry. Is this better?
I think so.
You can just pull it right forward.
There you go, you got it.
Good idea. Okay. So we are here tonight not representing any specific group or organization, but as residents of Chaska and the surrounding areas. We're here to express our gratitude towards you all as public servants. We're aware of the risks that you face, and we are thankful for your service for democracy. We also want to express extra gratitude and thanks to Chaska's finest, the Chaska Police Department. On June 14th, a day of great sadness and extra fear in our society, the Chaska Police Department worked extra hours to protect the community as well as being available at the No Kings event. They specifically spoke with gentle calm to some of our over 2,000 peaceful demonstrators, and even parked squad cars in specific locations to present, or prevent any rogue vehicles from possibly entering the sidewalks where we were lined up. Their presence made everyone feel safe, allowing them to demonstrate their love for our country and for democracy. We are all very grateful to the city of Chaska and the Chaska Police Department. Thank you. And thank you, Chief Seaberton.
I appreciate you guys coming down tonight, expressing your gratitude. I know that was really a horrible day in our history. I know that was really a horrible day in our history. And as I was on the phone with the chief in the morning, or early morning, I don't even know what time it was. But before your demonstration, that was actually a top, a top concern was just making sure that everybody in Chaska that was coming down to Chaska was going to be safe and welcomed in this community. And that is a shared goal that I think we all as a council have. And I know everybody in the community has. So, I'm grateful for you guys to come down here and kind of acknowledge that. And we'll continue to strive towards that, that mission together, so.
Yeah, and I feel like you really achieved that goal. I think people felt safe, they felt welcome. It was a very unknown tense kind of morning. But so many people felt the importance of, you know, exercising their First Amendment rights. And we're grateful that the police department was there to protect, no matter what the reason was, because it was a community event.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
I can mention that I've seen at least 40, 40 participants that have reached out on social media and mentioned the same thing, like being very appreciative. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, and I, and I would like to say that our chief emailed all of us as a council and gave us like commentary, list out kind of of some of the, the shared and expressed comments of that day. So, I appreciate you coming down. And it's nice to see that because there's a lot of extra time involved in work. You know, we had police officers that were off duty that came on duty to, to kind of help make sure that everybody was safe, so.
You know, one thing I'll, I'll mention too, a lot of people don't know, is that two of our officers were part of the SWAT initiative. Two of our officers were the ones that apprehended the suspect down in, well, at Foxen Township, down by Belle Plaine, Green Isle area. So, Ryan had a very busy weekend, so.
Well, it was very, it was, you know, another word of praise. It was, we were driving on 212, I forget, we might have been at Mass, or I can't even remember where we were, but driving home. And I saw all the tactical units and cars. And of course, your first thought is, "What is going on?" But when you just saw how ready they were for anything and how they were trying to keep the public safe. And, you know, it was, it was just amazing, all the effort that went into that as well. So, you know, I don't think that anybody ever feels unsafe in the city. But when you see that kind of thing, then you're even more grateful for the Public Safety Division.
Thank you guys for coming down. All right. Moving along, any other visitors for the visitor presentation? Not on the, not on the agenda. Otherwise, we will move along to approval of the meeting minutes for June 2nd, 2025. Do I have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve?
Okay, motion by Councilmember Shevlin.
We're all thinking about our cars right now.
Yep.
Second, my second, yeah.
Second from Councilmember Gra. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Minutes are approved. Okay, moving along to the consent items. We have some consent items here. These items receive little to no discussion. But if anybody would like to pull them off the agenda and have a bigger discussion, we certainly can. Otherwise, I would entertain, or I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent items, or...
Motion to approve consent.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
And second from Councilmember Benish. Any discussion? I think the only thing I would like to say is I'm, I'm just excited for 7C, see that in, in final completion from Beckman Coulter. So, yay. Otherwise, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on to action items. 8A, public hearing and Resolution 2025-33, authorizing execution of a tax abatement agreement for Beckman Coulter expansion.
So, Mayor and Councilmember, we're not done with Beckman Coulter yet. We got one more item here, which is our typical assistance package. And Elise is going to go over and describe in detail how that'll look.
So, Mayor and Councilmembers, Julie Grover, Economic Development Coordinator, has been working on this. And she's unable to be here tonight. So, I'll be presenting on that. And I do believe we have a representative of Beckman Coulter here as well. So, previously, you saw the item related to tax abatement at the beginning of May, where you entered into a letter of intent with Beckman Coulter. Since that time, they've gone through their planning items. You just approved on consent their site and building plan as well. So, this is like Matt said, this is kind of that final piece for approval tonight. So, just as a reminder, tax abatement is an economic development tool that allows us to rebate property taxes back to that property owner for key projects. So, when we're evaluating tax abatement projects, we kind of look at three key things. Is there a demonstrated need for assistance? Does it increase the number of quality jobs? And does it stimulate economic growth through tax base, growth in infrastructure investments? So, as you saw as part of your consent agenda tonight, Beckman Coulter is proposing, or you have approved Beckman Coulter for 148,000 square foot expansion with an investment of $50 million. And they anticipate adding about 300 high-quality jobs as part of that expansion over two to three years. So, since the letter of intent was approved, Julie in particular has worked closely with Beckman Coulter to develop that tax abatement package and agreement, which is included as part of your packet tonight. Some key terms as part of the agreement include, and again, you saw the majority of these before, a pay-as-you-go abatement up to $1.4 million, a maximum term of 13 years. Now, that is different, slightly different than your letter of intent, which called out 12 years. In working with Beckman Coulter, we added a 13th year in case there's a delay in beginning construction or something happens during the construction process. This just adds so that we don't have to come back to you to revise that agreement if needed. And, and it's either or, I guess I shouldn't say either or, but it's whatever happens first, either 13 years or $1.4 million in abatement assistance. And so, if we hit that $1.4 million before the end of the 13 years, then that abatement will be closed. Additionally, a portion of that abatement will go to resurfacing Lake Hazelton Drive, which the city will do, and it will be done by 2028. And then, finally, Beckman Coulter will also continue to coordinate with Chaska Electric to allow access to both existing and new transformers as needed as part of this project. So, with tax abatement, it does require a public hearing. And notice for tonight's hearing was published in the Waconia Patriot on June 5th, in accordance with state statute. So, given that this project brings, you know, significant tax base as well as high-quality jobs, as well as that infrastructure improvements to Lake Hazelton Drive, staff is recommending that you approve that agreement with Beckman Coulter. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions for Elise?
It's her to agree, you know, partnership and long-lasting industrial residents.
Yeah.
I think it's also going to benefit all the businesses out there because we'll get the road redone, which desperately needs it. So, it's, I think this is a positive for everybody.
Agreed, agreed. Okay, so, I guess we've got to open up a public hearing here. All right, so I call public hearing order, or call public hearing for 7:35. Anybody here like to come up to the microphone and speak? Now is the time. And seeing none, we're going to close that public hearing at 7:36. We're almost there. And bring it back in for, for an adoption. So, I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-33, approval of the property tax agreement.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Benish.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gra. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, sorry. All right, thank you guys so much for, for, for coming this evening. And we look forward to getting things started, so. All right, all right, moving along on the agenda. Item 8B, implement an electric utility franchise and franchise fee with both Minnesota Valley Electric and Xcel.
Mayor and Councilmembers, this is an item that we've been working on for the past several weeks, including having a public open house with this. I'm going to turn it over to Noel, who's been working on putting together the details of it. You'll see there's a lot of actions that we have to take under this, including agreements, but also changes to our ordinance as well. So, I'll turn it over to Noel and he can go through the details.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you. The action before you tonight is to approve several ordinances that will allow the city to establish an electric franchise utility agreement with both Xcel and Minnesota Valley. There'll also be an ordinance that'll allow the, where the city will implement a 5% franchise fee with both of those electric utilities. The reason the city is proceeding with this at this time is we have a public right-of-way that is used for locating our city infrastructure, for our roads and utilities. We also share that infrastructure with communication companies as well as with other utility companies such as gas, cable TV, and the electric utilities. It's a very crowded right-of-way. There's a lot of participants who are in that right-of-way. And we impose these franchise fees as a way of providing resources to acquire the right-of-way, to maintain the right-of-way, and to mark our city utilities that are located within that right-of-way when there is construction activities in an effort to ensure that those utilities are not damaged and service is not interrupted. The city has historically had a franchise agreement in place with CenterPoint Energy. When that was last renewed, we, in 2014, we put in place the 5% franchise fee with CenterPoint Energy at that time. The city has since then been working with both Minnesota Valley and Xcel Energy to also have them contribute to the right-of-way usage by imposing a 5% franchise fee on them as well. We have not done this previously because there were several actions that we had to take. One was, first of all, to complete the CenterPoint Energy franchise agreement and franchise fee because we want to have parity between the different competing energy companies that are in the right-of-way. Secondly, in 2021, the city had to unbundle our own right-of-way fee that we charge our electric customers. And we took 5% of our rates that included the cost for servicing the right-of-way and unbundled that to show it as a separate line item on our city utility bill. So, every one of our Chaska electric customers is paying a right-of-way charge based on 5% of their electric fees. So, it's a way of trying to show parity across all of the utilities. There's very few customers with Xcel. I'm guessing it's between like 12 and 15. We have just over 400 customers with Minnesota Valley. Those are mostly residential customers in the northwest portion of the city. We have been working with both Xcel and Min Valley to go through and draft the franchise agreements. Kristoff has been very instrumental. He's the, actually, the fourth attorney that the city has worked with to actually complete this process. So, it's been a very long process to get this into a final form that both Xcel and Minnesota Valley have agreed to at this point. So, at this point, we do have Joe Green with Minnesota Valley and Michelle Swanson from Xcel, who are available to answer any questions. Our intent here tonight would be to have you approve all four of the ordinances. And then, also approve a resolution that would allow us to publish a summary of the ordinances instead of the full ordinance in the Waconia Patriot. This is permitted by state statutes, a cost-saving measure to the city. The full ordinances have been on the city website for public access for more than 10 days. And the final form will also be available on the city website. So, taking advantage of this summary publication is something we've done in the past, particularly for our utility ordinances. So, we'll be going through five different actions tonight to approve the four ordinances and the one resolution that will need a four-fifths vote for approval. With that, I would open it up to any questions you have of staff or of our guests tonight.
I'll just mention two things. First of all, with the public open house that we had, we had only one person show up for that. And they were a member of the MVIC Board of Directors. And so, I think they're just sort of curious about stuff. We provided, sent out notices to everybody who's affected. Then, we didn't receive any responses back on that. And then, probably the last thing is, you know, we talk about equity a lot, but equity is important across the city. And, and one thing that this action will do is, it'll make sure that the 420-some properties that are affected by this, it makes sure that what, how we're treating them is exactly the same way we're treating the other 11,000 residents within the city. So, it make, so now, everybody across the board in the city will all be on the same page with, with things.
Anybody have any questions for, for staff? That was my question was, I know we did some public notification. And did anybody come forward? And what was the thoughts? But it sounds like people did not, so.
Yeah.
Okay. I know we, we had a work session about this. So, I know it seems like maybe to the public, that's all watching on, our 1.2 million viewers on YouTube, that we might be breezing through this, but I promise we are not. We have had this discussion and kind of talked through things as a council in regards to this, so. So, this is just the next step. So, with that, if no one else has any questions, I would entertain, we get started on these adoptions of these ordinances here, because we have a few of them. And so, I'll kick it off. Does anybody want to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-1063, granting Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative as an electric utility franchise?
So, moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a, a motion from Councilmember Hatfield and a second by Councilmember Gra. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that ordinance is adopted. And then, moving along to the next one, we have adopt ordinance number 2025-1064, implementing an electric energy franchise fee on Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative. Any other discussion? Or do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Shevlin and a second from Councilmember Benish. All right, any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That one's adopted. All right, moving along to adopt ordinance number 2025-1065, granting Northern State's Power Company an electric utility franchise. Motion?
So moved.
I'll second that one. So, I have a motion from Councilmember Benish and a second from Mayor Hubbard. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, and then, we have adopt ordinance number 2025-1066, implementing, yeah, this is a different one, right? Implementing an electric energy franchise fee on Northern State's Power Company.
Motion to adopt.
All right.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Shevlin and a second from Councilmember Gra. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that one's adopted. And then, last, we have adopt Resolution number 2025-32, to approve summary publication of ordinances, 2025-1063, 2025-1064, 2025-1065, and 2025-1066.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Councilmember Hatfield and a second from Councilmember Benish. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that is adopted. Thank you guys for coming out. It's nice to see you, Michelle.
A big thanks to Joe and Michelle and Noel and Kristoff. They all worked very hard on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's why they call you the closer.
Yeah.
You two together, the closer.
The closer, took the fourth lawyer to come in and do it.
Right on. Okay, moving right along to bills, the most exciting part of our agenda. Does anybody have any questions on a bill? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Wow, that's a lot of people clamoring, okay.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Thank you.
Second.
Alright, so I have a motion from Councilmember Grau and a second from Councilmember Shovlin. Any discussion, otherwise, roll call please. Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Benish?
Yes.
Councilmember Shovlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Grau?
Aye.
Mayor Hubbard?
Aye.
Alright, those are adopted, awesome. Okay, moving on to other business. Let's start with Councilmember Grau. What you got? Or should I move on to somebody else?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. I think I'm just, you know, reflective of the events that we talked about, I think, Madam Mayor, your, your message that you had put out on the social media, she was, was well-written and I appreciated that, and I know, I'm sure those were a hundred percent all your words from your heart, and I truly mean that. And I think it's just, it is, it's an interesting time, and, you know, it's, you know, I'm reflective of the fact that one of the interests, I was a political science major, one of the interests that I've always felt good is a good conversation and debate among people, and I do feel like that is a lost part of society right now. There is not a healthy debate or conversation respectfully. It tends to just become really rigid quickly, and I just, I, I wish that wasn't the case, and I don't know, there's no magic way to fix that. You know, but in conversations with my kids, right, who hear the news and wonder what's going on, and all those tough conversations that get had, just doing the right thing, and I think, you know, for me, it's about myself doing the right model, and appreciating people who come in and have different ideas, and, and listening to them and respecting, and, and understand that I'm not always gonna agree with someone who, but we can be respectfully disagree, right? I think there's true value in that, I don't just say that to say that. So, you know, for myself, I think that is really what I view kind of from the events, is like, when, not controlling the things you can't control, but trying to be part of the solution, and just doing what you can control as individuals and as people, so, you know, just a, a thought for the one point two million people who are watching this to, to try to bring that, you know, common politeness back to the political concourse and conversation, and, and just, you know, get to know people. People are people, and we're all, we have more common connections than we do differences, so. So again, appreciate your message, I just thought it was very well-written and, and kind of hit the tone. Just as, a couple of things I shared with Elise, but I'll just share generally the council and get it on the public record. I did get a request a little bit from, I know it's the first day that forty-one's closed, so if you haven't tried to figure out how to get around town, do so now. Savannah Way's a good route, that's the route I actually took to Community Field today. Remembered to do that instead of taking the highway, because I always forget, come from my neighborhood. But the one request was, and I think we're gonna pass it on to the county, was White Oak Drive seems to have, today at least, a lot of people thinking that may be a route to get north, and you have to go pretty far onto that road to realize you can't go any further. So they requested maybe a no-through, you know, not a through road sign there at the top, because they're seeing a lot of turnaround traffic.
And when those people turn around, as by historical content of my neighborhood, they get pretty frustrated and they want to fly out of there.
And it's all, I mean, you gotta go a decent way before you realize, before you realize you can't go. So, just some observations, so appreciate, you know, people's patience as people navigate that area. The roundabouts, interesting, like, it's just like, I just, when I took it here from Community, it's just kind of an interesting, like, wow, this, this fit in this space, and it's kind of a, you know, a lot of cones to look at, and, but they'll get a stripe soon. So just encourage people to patience, and maybe for the first couple of days, extra, plan some extra time to get around as you gotta adapt new ways to get there. Be respectful of the neighborhoods, be respectful to the detours, there's a reason why detours get set up the way they are, even though there might be a shorter way, be respectful for those neighbors that that might be rounding through, so.
Can I, Councilmember Grau?
Yes.
I did send that message on to the county staff, and they've gotten several of those messages today and anticipate signage in the next few days, so I want to provide you with that answer.
Perfect, yeah, I mean, I, I can see what happens, right? You're like, oh, I'm gonna go this route, and you're driving, 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 till you realize that you can't, it's a dead end eventually, right? Lastly, just, you know, we, with my connection to the baseball organizations, held the Chaska Classic. The city, I think, showed well, right? Good baseball fields, good conditions, a lot of people come. Unfortunately, Mother Nature didn't want to share with that excitement, and we did impact one set of grades, the nine-year-olds unfortunately did not get to play because they're at Pioneer, and Pioneer's fields historically don't hold as water as well as other fields hold water. But also just a shout-out to volunteers and parents and people who spent a lot of time on Friday, hours and hours getting those fields ready to showcase Chaska, and working with the school and with the city and all those places, because it took, it took a lot of quick dry, I don't know how much pounds of quick dry we went through to try to throw down and kind of absorb that water and rake, but it's good. It was just good to see activity at the ballfields, people around, and, you know, if, if, if you're wondering what was happening at the ballfields, that's what it was. So it was nine-year-olds, which didn't happen up to eleven-year-olds, so. Teams from River Falls, Mankato, River Falls, lots of different teams coming from different ways.
Which could be to showcase community.
And that is all I have, Mayor.
Awesome. Well, speaking as someone that learned how to paint the lines on an athletic field recently, is not an easy job. I will put that out there. That was, was interesting, especially when you don't know how to drive a manual shift vehicle, so. Thank you, alright, Councilmember Hatfield.
Sure, a few things. Can't remember anything that's happened in the last two weeks, but it's been one of those couple of days. Some events coming up though, Chaska Pride is on June twenty-first at McKnight Park. Right, McKnight?
Yep, McKnight this year, yep.
And then Picnic with Police, June twenty-fifth, new location, Fireman's, so not at Veterans this year.
Ooh, I did not know that, that's good to know.
That's what the Facebook says.
Okay, no, I have, I have the, you know, I didn't look, I guess I didn't look that close, so.
Yeah, so it says Fireman's.
Okay.
I guess.
Yeah.
I'd assume they put the right one on it. So, they did say bring a lawn chair blanket. I would recommend that, especially because Veterans has like a whole little thing to sit down at right there versus Fireman's has the seating, but it's in a little different spot. So, bring, but it is always like an event that's very well-attended, so it would make sense that we'd need a bigger venue. So that's exciting.
That's exciting.
And then a pop-up splash pad, which, if you put it on Facebook at a time, is it really a pop-up? I don't know, but pop-up splash pad, June twenty-seven.
Well, it's not there and then it's there.
That's true, that's true. Also at Fireman's. Councilmember Grau touched on the Highway ten forty-one closure, lots of ways to get around. So it is closed, but, you know, there's Audubon, Savannah Way. Is, is eleven fully open yet?
No.
No, don't try that one then. June is Pride Month, and I didn't say that at our last meeting, so happy Pride. It's also National Safety Month, so happy National Safety Month. And then finally, I wrote up something, I don't think I'll get through it. So, um, but.
Do you want me to come back?
That's okay.
Okay. Do you want me to read what you wrote?
I just think that, I won't read, I won't read it because I won't get through it all right on Facebook or something, but I just want to say that what you wrote was perfect, and I think, I thought about it a lot over the weekend, and that vile human that committed those acts is not a representation of Minnesota, and I just want to put that out there. And I want to say that the people who demonstrated so peacefully this weekend are a demonstration, are a representation of what Minnesota is. And so thank you to the people of our community that did, that were, you know, still going out with passion and maybe anger and all of those things, but did it peacefully, and were able to represent truly what I think Minnesota is. So I won't be able to read all this, but I wanted to say that. That's all.
I appreciate your thoughts. Yeah. I agree wholeheartedly that you're right. Not a, not a representative person of our community, or the state of Minnesota, so. Okay, shifting gears. Councilmembers.
Well, again, I will follow up with, the words were wonderful, I read it and I was very moved by your words. And I think you meant them, so that's even better, once in a while means the words that they say, and they're not just GPT-ing it out.
Yeah.
And, you know, we went to Mass the next day, and Father Talbot said from the pulpit, "I had a homily planned for you all, and I'm not going to do it today, we're gonna switch gears and we're gonna talk about what happened," and the message ended with that you model all this behavior, so it starts at home, and how you handle conflict in your home, and how you teach your children how to handle conflict, and that's, you know, whether it's being respectful or disrespectful of another person's point of view starts there and goes on. So I would just, you know, it was a very moving homily because it was from the heart right there at the pulpit, and I think it had everybody thinking it really doesn't matter what side of the house you're on, violence and, you know, unkind behavior is not the way to go, so. I would just echo what everybody else has said about that, and then shout-out to the community sports, or Zach, is it Johnson, Batchery, I never know his name anymore, but we started baseball this week, Chaska whatever, Community Center Baseball, and although I thought it was soccer, so my six-year-old was dressed in soccer cleats and chin guards for the first baseball game.
Only one of those things has come off.
Exactly, I mean, we didn't have a glove on, but. But we will be prepared this Tuesday for baseball, but he was up at the fields at Pioneer Ridge, and greeting all the parents and all the kids and juice boxes, and just it was a very nice way to kick off summer sports for the littles who are not yet on competitive or school leagues.
That's how it starts, though.
I know.
Wearing cleats and chin guards for baseball.
That's how it starts, and then you're busy every weekend.
I have such fond memories of going through that program with Ethan, and we did this, we did do the soccer, it was in the fall. It was, it was at the Sunset, which is like right across the street from my house, and so we just had to walk out the door, walk across the street, it was amazing.
And we do the gymnastics, and we participated in most of the youth activities that go on, high skating we did.
Exceptional job at that.
Yeah, everything but swimming we've done, and it's all been amazing, so I, shout-out to all of the volunteer coaches and mostly dads, but who volunteer their time to do that for the youth, and, and all of the community workers that helped make it possible.
All I have to say is enjoy it, because soon enough, they're gonna look like that.
How you doing back there? He's pointing to his son, who's a grown man now, so. Wonderful. Alright, Councilmember Benish.
I will echo all the comments of the other council members that have been stated. I will say myself, it was a tough weekend, and no matter what side of the aisle you reside on, if you, if you even choose to reside on a side of the aisle, you can reside anywhere. Political violence has no place in this country, not here. It's, it's not what we do. Respectful discourse, agree to disagree, debate it out, and one of the things I always tell my kids to stress is, every day, do the right thing and be a good person. And I feel like if we could all just do that, we'd be in a much better spot right now, and start to condemn social media, and just knee-jerk reactions of people without thinking. And just do the right thing and be good people, so that's all I've got.
Appreciate hearing your thoughts. Okay, moving along, Elise, you do not have any updates. Okay, Kristoff? Matt?
The, a couple of things, so on the thirtieth, we are having a meeting, and not having on the seventh. We did have City Square West, we were gonna do a work session on that tonight, and unfortunately, we did not get funded again this year, so we're, we're working through coming up with what the plans are, so when we're ready, hopefully in July, we're, we're thinking probably mid-July, we'll be ready to come back and, and talk about that. But on the thirtieth, we are planning on having two work sessions, or two topics for a work session that night. One of them will be sort of exciting, we'll be able to show you sort of the first renditions of the municipal service building that we're going through, and we do have the cost estimates now back, and I have a smile on my face, so they're not bad.
That is good.
Yeah, so that's good. So we'll be talking a little bit about that, so you can get sort of a sense of, not only how we're gonna use that site, but how we're gonna reuse and hopefully make it better for the neighbors and everything over at our old site. So some of the stuff that we'll do over there, and then the second part of the work session will be our first discussion on the budget for two thousand twenty-six. The meeting itself, there's a couple of items that we have on there, so it'll be relatively short. So if we don't finish up everything before the meeting, we'll just finish up whatever we don't after we go through the meeting at seven o'clock.
So you want us here at five-thirty?
Yeah, we're gonna do five-thirty is gonna be that. And I think that's it, I concur with what everybody has set up here, great words. Just terrible, terrible weekend, and it's just even hard to put in words, but, but I just, prayers obviously to everybody who's been involved in it, and also just to our, our police department, because, you know, Ryan won't say it, but, you know, Ryan worked all weekend. And he, I mean, he was calling me multiple times, you know, throughout the weekend, just giving me updates on things, and they were busy the entire time keeping us safe, because, you know, it crossed our minds several times that where these crimes occurred and where his home were, that were in between that.
Yeah.
And so that was very much on, on the chief's mind, especially with the demonstration that was gonna happen, that they just needed to be extra vigilant, so I just so much appreciate our officers' willingness to just jump in, come in, you know, do the work that needed to be done, and just make people feel safe, so big thanks to them.
Absolutely. Yeah, huge thanks to our, our police department, and to you, Matt, I mean, you were in contact with me, and you, I don't know how much you really got a weekend off either, so as you were kind of hashing through things and kind of keeping things up to date, so it was, it was a huge sigh of relief, I think, that we probably all felt last night when we had heard the news that he had been apprehended, so. But it was also a little bit, a little bit jarring that he had made it all the way to Green Isle, and it was like, you're right. It was like there was that in-between, and, and there's so much unknown, and I'm sure as things unfold, we'll, we'll learn more and know more, but that was very horrible news, and I just sat in my living room, my son was watching the news, he's ten, he's got, you know, he's, he comprehends a lot in the panic. On my kid's face, because he just, when they say that this individual has a list of people that he's targeting, my son immediately, who's on that list? Are you on that list? Do you, people you know on that list, and, you know, trying to reassure your children? But he was also with, you know, as, you know, you door knock the community, and I will say, you know, very, very few, very, very minuscule amount of incidents, as I came in contact with members of our community, that were not positive, and only once did I ever feel like this might be a real escalating issue with an individual. But it is, it goes to sentiment, as you said, Councilmember Grau, that we can have disagreements and still have respect for one another, and I think that's really the long goal, and I think about, you know, in a neighboring community, there was a school board member that, you know, a really challenging issue came up, and she was bullied so hard into submission that she just said, I've got kids, and I, I can't do this. And so you have people that are really good, and you hear that all the time, like, why don't more good people sign up to put themselves on the line, to, to, to put themselves out there and to be a part of public office? You have great ideas, well, those are the, the fears that happen in the back of people's heads, because some people don't have that respect factor, and, and bad things can happen, and and so I commend anybody who puts themselves on the line, and I, as I said that in that statement, it's not an easy position. You know that the, the choices and the votes that you make impact the lives of other people around you, but you do it with the sense of due diligence, and knowing that, you know, you're keeping the You know that the, the choices and the votes that you make impact the lives of other people around you, but you do it with the sense of due diligence and knowing that, you know, you're keeping the framework of the community in mind and that you're, you care about the community just like any other individual does, and, um, and you may differ about what that looks like, but in the, at the end, we all care a lot about this community. And so I just hope that we keep the mentality of loving people first, um, and foremost, and having respect for people first and foremost. So I was nervous about our, uh, demonstration that was scheduled to happen. I did not want to see anything negative happen to anybody that was in this community, and I wanted to allow everyone the freedom to express their views, um, but you don't want to create a cause for more violence. So I so commend our police officers for stepping up to take the time off, to come and be an added help and effort, and to also help create a sense of calm and well-being, um, in our community, so.
And one thing I forgot, the fire department too.
And, yes, and the fire department, you're right.
The fire department was part of that.
They were part of that. They, they stepped up and heeded the call as well, so, so thank you. They, they definitely deserve to be acknowledged and all of that. Um, and also for, uh, some of our visitors to come down and, and thank them, so it's much appreciated. Switching gears, e-bikes and pedestrian safety. Now to talk about communities and things, I've had a lot of calls lately of, or, or messages of people that like, you know, people aren't stopping in the crosswalks. I almost got hit by a car, myself, on Hunter Mark. You know, there are kids that are on, uh, e-bikes that are just, I mean, going max speed, and they're not really saying, hey, I'm on your left or, or whatever. And so there are people that are fearful to, to, to use and utilize our amenities, our trails, they are our top amenities. So I would just like to express to the community that we should be paying attention. There are a lot of kids out and pedestrians out at summertime. We need to make sure we're watching where we're driving and that we're driving safe, appropriate speeds on the roads, and acknowledging that those pedestrians, they do have the right of way on a crosswalk. That you can't just drive through and just, they're just going to stand there on the sidelines. But also when you're on the trails, if you are on electronic bike or biking really fast, that you're just being respectful and you're acknowledging to people that are, uh, on the trail with you, that you're sharing that trail and you're, you're being safe. That maybe you slow down a little bit when you're passing people and you can zoom up ahead and everything. And, um, I know you were going to have something to say about this, but, uh, one thing I do know is that you have to be 15 to use those things. So if you have, um, an e-bike and you are letting your kids under the age of 15 use it, please stop, please don't, because, uh, that is against the, uh, law. So why don't you go ahead and take it away on that?
So, a couple of different issues there. So one of them is safe crossings at our, uh, trails that, that go across collector roads. So really the two main roads that we have that, uh, condition on is Hunter Mark and on Bavaria. And so, uh, we are going to be installing at Purple Brick Road, so that's the entrance into the, the high school. At Friendship Park, there's a crosswalk that goes into our area, and then at Community Park, there's a, another crossing goes in there. We're going to be putting the, uh, pedestrian activated, uh, blinking, uh, lights, uh, at those. We'll do that this summer. Next summer is when we repave Bavaria Road, so there'll be two intersections there that we'll be putting.
By Bavaria Hills?
Right by Bavaria Hills, and then, uh, there's another one, I think, might be up by Nickel Creek, but there's like two crossings that are on there that we'll put those on, uh, as we're repaving that road, uh, next summer. Second thing is, uh, I know Hunter and Kevin have been working on, uh, putting together like an educational piece for people. The city of Shakopee just did one, city of Edina just did one. A lot of cities are seeing very similar issues with, with, uh, these e-bikes, uh, that are out there and just sort of the danger, and some of them, you can't tell the difference between them and it looks like a dirt bike, you know, that, that's going on there. So, uh, we're sort of, uh, using some of the examples they've had for doing educational piece. Now, we do have the ability, and Kristoff's done some, some investigation or research into this. We do have the ability to, uh, create some type, some restrictions on the trails, uh, which we can do. The challenge is enforcement.
Yeah.
And so I think, um, I think, at least my opinion, and I think if we are, uh, I think we should take it one step at a time, and maybe start with the educational pieces and see what happens. I get concerned, a little concerned about putting out an ordinance that we don't have the ability to enforce, because once we create the ordinance, then, um, people are going to have an expectation that, that we enforce it. You know, you can imagine how hard it is if somebody calls and says, well, there's a person driving on this trail, uh, you know, going real fast, and then by the time we get out there, they're halfway across town. So it's, we're giving some thought and talking to other departments have given some, some thought to this about, is there a better way than others to enforce that? Or is there better types of restrictions that you can put in place that make it a little bit easier to, uh, see some type of enforcement action that you could take? Uh, so that's some of the research that we're, we're doing right now, uh, but that's just sort of an update on both of those topics.
You can hire my 10-year-old, because we're at Community today. We've had this conversation in my family, because I've heard it from several officers as well as just observation, and I'm sitting here watching my son's baseball game and at Community, and my 10-year-old at the park right behind me, and I see an e-buck, e-bike go flying down, bike pal, and I hear my son go, how old are you? You need to be 15.
Yeah, you can just hang out.
I'm like, so, if you need someone just to like, sit there, right?
Citizen enforcement.
And just laugh, I'm just like, yep, we've had that conversation, that's true.
Oh, the children are our future. Let us, let them show the way, all right? Yeah, so, well, good, I'm glad, and, yeah, it, I, I know we're, we're not alone in, in that, in as far as community-wise, it's kind of undergoing this, as, as those bikes become more available and affordable and, and used, so just a kind of a new chapter. We talked about the construction, yeah. Uh, I've fielded some calls about that today, um, yeah, be mindful of detours. You talked about the Human Rights Commission picnic, three to six at McKnight. The Community Market is on Thursdays from four to eight. They also have the Clay Hall Concert Series that are happening at the same time at six o'clock this week, upcoming here for this Thursday's Travel Ground, it's a local group. And Chaska Cubs is having the Family Night in the ballpark from four to six this Sunday. That's the 22nd? Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, first pitch is, or it's from four to six, uh, first pitch is at five o'clock. Shameless, I get to throw it, so. Yeah.
Very soft, like.
Well, I might, I might give it over to my son. I, I don't know.
The key is aim high.
Yeah, yeah.
They want to be a viral video.
So I gotta, gotta start, I'd like to see my, my, my throwing here. But no, so, uh, Cap Agency is sponsoring or the benefactor of this, and so is Little Ruse, um, so they, um, they always do such a nice job at the Cubs game, such a great, great, uh, great experience out there. Also, at the top of my list, on Wednesday, the Met Council is coming to our event center, and, uh, they're kind of like doing this traveling road show, uh, deal where that's open to the public. You guys, council members, are encouraged to, to come down. Um, it starts at 4:30 with an open house, uh, and then they'll have, uh, like a council, Met Council meeting briefly or, or opening comments, and then there are some panel discussions and, drum roll please, because there is a guest speaker that is going to be a part of one of these panels, um, and I think everyone will enjoy. Should I give it away? So it's former Mayor Mark Windshuttle is going to be there on Wednesday, uh, talking about, you know, Fireman's Park history and other historical aspects, projects of Chaska alongside of me, so we get to, the dynamic duo gets to come back together, together again, so. But then there's another panel that has, um, so the Minnetokwakan, um, community, um, is it the director of the Minnetokwakan community? And then also a business owner in Shakopee, and then, uh, Mayor Johnson from Carver will be a part of that panel as well. So, fun times to be had, um, down at the event center, again, 4:30 to 6:00.
And we have posted it, so everybody can go without having to worry about open meeting.
No. Yes. So, uh, I think that's it. I think we've mentioned everything else, other than the, with the police picnic, they are gathering donations for Southern Valley, so Stop the Squad. So I'm assuming it's school supplies. They didn't really say specifically, but that's what they've done in years past. Next council meeting is on the 30th. We have a couple of work sessions before that. No meeting on July 7th. That's all I have. We got through this, you guys. Okay, um, so, uh, I would, I guess, entertain, unless anybody has anything else they forgot, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Gra, second by Councilmember Shovlin. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.